We're recording, right? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Dyton Board of Health Regular Meeting. We're at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. Today is Thursday, February 10th, 2022. This is a remote participation Zoom meeting. Also, a public meeting being recorded for cable broadcasts and internet posting on www.dytton-mass.gov and YouTube. Zoom meeting number is 859-956-86033. Zoom meeting passcode 562169. Zoom dial-in number is 19292056099. It's 6:02 PM. We'll call a meeting to order. Would everyone mind or not mind standing? But I pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. I guess there's nobody on there, correct, to introduce?
No.
I'm going to introduce the board members over to the present tonight. Is on my left is Kevin Bernato, board member. On my right is Mrs. Barbara Katavia, board member, myself, Tom Pires. And I'll recognize everybody. Todd Pillings, health agent, on my left. Office manager, Rosalind Grossi. To my right is our newly appointed town nurse, Nicole Mello, and a animal control officer, this is Stacy Ferry. We'll start the order of business. Review Discussing Act, proposed kennel regulations. I think Roz just passed out everything that we're going to go over, and it shouldn't take too, too long. Three of these are only amendments to what has already been approved by town council and approved by this board and is an existing regulation. So if we go to the first page, which would be the big A with the circle on it, I think I highlighted everything that's pertinent to what the changes were. Basically, what we did on A, we changed Dyton Board of Health to Dyton Town Clerk. If you look on the next page of A, you should find that. Did you get it, Barbara?
Uh huh.
Okay. Now, going to page B, there were three areas that we removed a reference to the Board of Health or the health agent by replacing those with, in the first sentence, Town Clerk's office. And then, on the closing, instead of Todd Pillings, Dyton Board of Health, we put Mark Pacico, Dyton Town Clerk. These have already been agreed to by Mark Pacico and myself. He is the licensing authority for kennels, and he will be the enforcing authority along with the animal control officer for enforcement of these regulations as we go forward. So on C, it's basically the same thing. You see in the second sentence, Board of Health is highlighted, and then Todd Pillings and Dyton Board of Health. Those are being replaced with the Town Clerk's office, Mark Pacico and Dyton Town Clerk. That takes the onus off the Board of Health and puts it where it should be, either with the Town Clerk's office or his designee, depending on what the situation is. Now, on D, this is the article that was, it's a final draft, and this is going to be presented again at the next annual town meeting. That's on D. So we're not making any changes to that. I'm still waiting to hear if we're going to have to have another public hearing with the planning board. Carrie thinks we do. I don't think we do, but it depends what the law says. There's so many days we have to have a public hearing prior to the annual town meeting that the article will be placed on. We did it in the fall, so I'm not sure whether we have to do it again or not, but Carrie from the planning board is checking that out. Now, E, I think the first page, you'll see a line through it, says "See attached." That is the final draft. This was done, actually Stacy was involved with this, with myself and Mark Pacico. So I don't want to read it, so if you want to take a minute to just go through it quick, and if there's any comments, questions, just let me know. Everybody done? Okay. What we're doing with this article is trying to eliminate the need for an expensive hearing for those people who are looking for a residential permit. It's under the zoning, a special permit is required, and we can issue one, but the hearing will be held by this board at no charge, instead of the $750 fee, a $1,000 fee, whatever it may be, that the zoning board would normally charge. The sign-off sheet that's mentioned is a copy of it with what you received as a passout. The sign-off sheet was actually Jim Agia's idea, which was a good idea, because he makes a determination whether or not this application would need to go to our board or whether it would need to go to the planning board. But for residential kennel, most of them will be coming to us, I think all of them probably. But he would be the one that verifies the zoning and decides on which direction this goes. Stacy, any comments?
Well, let's just take seven. On approval of the kennel by the agency, Board of Health, zoning enforcement officer, and zoning board of appeals. I thought we were taking zoning board of appeals after.
On the sign-off sheet?
No, this is on seven, on the new regulations for the new residential kennels.
But what page?
It's E.
It's E.
It's number seven.
Number seven. I think the zoning boards are, the reason that's on there is they're acknowledging that the zoning board of appeals does not have to have a hearing. I would agree with you that we should take it off and make it simpler, but...
Yeah, because Jim's representing.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can take mine. I guess my comment is, I just saw this today. I'd really like it to be tabled so we can sit down with Mark Pacico, either the chief or the lieutenant, all the people that are involved in this, so we can get a consensus, because I really haven't been able to really look it over. I did see that, and I thought, well, I thought we were taking it out of their hands. That's why we were doing this whole new thing, so...
Well, the reason for the zoning enforcement officer...
I have no problem with the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay. So you have a problem, basically, with the sign-off for the zoning?
I have a problem with not seeing this until today. That's my biggest problem.
I have to agree. I just saw this today.
Me too.
And I think it should be tabled until next month, so, or whenever we can all meet together and discuss it, because I really wasn't as involved in this as I should have been.
Well, you were involved in the beginning, and it hasn't changed a whole lot.
Very beginning, but it has changed, so I think I should have been there in the discussions, and I haven't been. So I think, so we can all really look at it and make sure it passes. I don't want to come to town meeting again and it failing again. I want it to pass.
Well, this has nothing to do with passing or failing a town meeting, because the regulations...
It does, because why it failed at the fall one was because there was no regulations. People are going to ask for the regulations.
Like, what do you need to do?
What do you want to see changed on this? I would like to move this along.
Well, I really, as I said, I saw this for the first time today. I need to really sit and mull it over. I have a copy, thank you. Mull it over, and where I got it was from the town clerk, because nobody in your office had it. So, you know, I...
Yeah, you should have gotten it from the town clerk, because he's the one that wrote this. Now, if you have a discussion with the town clerk, as you should have had...
I did.
You would have had this information.
I did have a discussion more than once, and he, first he said to me, you need to get it from Tom Pires. And I came over here, and nobody had it, so I went back to him.
Just for the record, I shouldn't even be involved with this.
Okay, so this is another thing. I don't know where it belongs, then.
It belongs with the police department and you.
It does. I don't think it does, because...
I think it does.
The kennel goes under Amel Specter. That's what I've been told. So I don't think the kennel by law has anything to do with the police department, and if it does, they should have some kind of input on the regulations and how we're going to enforce it.
That's why we invited them tonight and where they are. Now, we can't have any input from the police department. Everybody makes excuses, but nobody wants to do the work.
I'm not making excuses. I'm just asking for it to be tabled so I can see it, so we can talk about it again.
Well, we are talking about it, and I'd like to get your comments now.
Well, you have two board members that haven't seen it either.
See what your changes are going to be.
Mr. Chairman, if I can interject. I got this in an email today.
I haven't sent it, because I didn't see it.
It wasn't me. Oh, yes, it was. I scanned it in. I got an email today, so I didn't get to read it. How to see, when I got home from work, then I noticed it. So myself, I'd like to just get a grasp of it, because it says here that it's Dyton regulations for Dyton Board of Health, right? And then we have the hearings here.
Who are you now?
I'm just reading what the front page says.
Okay.
It's the Dyton regulations, Board of Health regulations. And then we have a hearing here, but then the enforcement officer is Tom Clerk. It's on Saturday.
Well, the town clerk has to give out the licenses. That's by law.
How's he in the enforcement? So what happens?
Right.
A violation occurs, then you go to the town clerk, and the town clerk issues you a citation?
No.
And collects the money?
Animal control.
I...
That's her job.
...do citations.
But when you pay a citation, you pay at the town clerk's.
Right.
I always thought you couldn't pay, like, when I give a citation, you pay, you don't go directly to the Board of Health and say, here's your, here's your fine.
Right.
You go to the town clerk, and they take the money. Now, the town clerk's going to issue the fine? You pay the town clerk. How's the, how's the, how's the hearing on that?
Animal control.
So he writes in, and you appeal to him again? Makes no sense. It really doesn't. It should be, if it's a regulations from the Board of Health, then it should go through the Board of Health. Like a food regulation. We issue the fine.
The reason it's coming through us, as I said before, is to save the people money, and also...
How many, how many people are we saving money? How many people do have this?
A lot.
A lot.
I have, I have, I had five or six people come to me last year looking for a new kennel, and it was a new regulation, and they went to Carrie and talked to her, and once they heard how much it was going to be, they disappeared.
So...
I want people, I want people to be compliant.
My thing is, it has to be collectively, because it looks like out the comment, out of, or maybe just Tom, is the only one that's saying, hey, I'd like to save some people some money. But nobody else cares.
Nah, it's not just me.
Then why aren't these people here, speaking up?
Well, because it's, it was only on our agenda. It wasn't posted as...
It's for our discussion.
And then, what are we losing all the time in town meeting? Why is this always failing?
Well, this last, this last time it failed because somebody got up and says, where are the regulations? We want to see the regulations, and there was no regulations written. So then it was defeated.
I just want to know how you want to change this. This is what the, this meeting is for.
I think the folks that are supposed to be involved in all these things should have a say, should make public comments, even if they can't be here.
Right.
Make a public comment, and then we all read the comments and hash it out. But to just say, oh, the ones that are going to be involved are these folks, but they're not even here to say, I'd be involved. Are they going to be involved or not? Or is it going to be just this office rejecting and approving?
Once these regulations are in place, this office is done with this.
No, it's not. They come here.
Right. That's what it says.
They're not going to come here. They go to the animal control officer.
No, complaints, it has to be approved at some point by the Board of Health, so it has to come to this office.
The procedure is to come before here, right?
Yes.
Well, I know we're probably not going to be here next year.
They come here for the hearing, then they'll come here for a fine.
They'll come here for the hearing, the original hearing.
Well, you know, we're...
Do you have a problem with people coming here to us for a hearing versus...
But it says not just us, other folks, right?
Well, it's got to go through Jim, the zoning enforcer, then it has to go through me, then supposedly it's supposed to go through the Board of Health, and then, at the end, the town clerk can issue the license. At some point, if somebody says no, for whatever reason, then we have a problem, because nine times out of 10, these people already have four dogs in their house, just living in their house. Nobody knows it. It's their own personal thing, and now, if for some reason somebody says, I don't want them to have that kennel license, who's going to tell them they can't have their dogs? I'll go on record saying, it's not going to be me. I'm sorry. Dogs are people's family, and I'm not going to tell somebody they can't have four dogs. And the only reason they have to get a kennel license in that aspect is because they have four or more dogs. It's not because they have an outside kennel. We've got to put that, I think we have to put the word kennel out of our mind.
You're thinking outside.
You're thinking outside, you know, barking and stuff like that, and that's not 95% of our kennels in this town.
I think we're off track here. Does anybody have any comments that they want to change in this regulation that was written by the town clerk and myself? This is the purpose tonight.
Well, Tom, I think, I think it's very unfair. I just got this 15 minutes ago. You want me to sit here and read this now?
We can table it.
The lips table it.
Because it might be, because I know a lot of work was put into this, and it's probably great, but I'm just trying to understand it, and I actually really feel rushed. So that's why I want to, I want to be able to digest it, ask the questions, then maybe we can talk about it again.
Yeah. I just want to say, the regulations that you go to, it was the E, and it says Town of Dyton Regulation Relative to Kennels, and it goes on to, we'll call it the legal end of it, but there's nothing in here that says anything about fences, or barking, or leashes, or we'll say the running water, or what you're going to do with the animal waste. What I consider the regulations of a kennel, not the legal end of it, if that's...
This is procedural stuff. The, this board, or whoever issuing it, will make a decision whether they need a fence, whether, you can't discriminate because of the type of dog.
No, I understand that, but is this board going to decide as each person comes in front of us that, yes, you need a fence, you need an electronic fence, or a stone wall's fine, or is it this board that's going to be making those decisions on if the perimeter, whatever, is acceptable?
And that's a good point.
And I guess I don't want to...
And I think if they come here and they got 10 dogs on a quarter acre lot, that's kind of a lot.
Were the town people asking for procedure regulation or regulation regulation?
I'm not sure. They said, what, where are the regulations? Because in the, in the thing...
Are they asking for the whole thing? Or were they just saying, what's the procedure? This is a, this is a procedure.
We have to have laws to go by.
Because where it says in what they said on the town meeting is that the Board of Health and Animal Control, it does say, approved by the Board of Health and Animal Control shall inspect yearly, annually. The Board of Health shall make regulations governing said process. So, or approving and inspecting is what the, what we want to put out as a town, as a bylaw change.
Yeah, it actually says, so, it doesn't really say, like, it says that the enforcement officer would be Tom Clerk. But what do they, what would the violations would be? Right? Didn't say any kind of violations.
That's up to the animal control to figure out what the violation is.
We have to make regulations, then, real regulations.
It sounds like it.
Yeah, so it says, like, if the enforcement person is this, what did you, what is he enforcing? There's no teeth to this. All this is procedure. Now that I'm reading it more.
That's what it's supposed to be.
Then change it to a procedure, and then now make regulations.
Yeah, I told him that. See the, see the first page? You may want to think about adding this to Town Procedural Manual instead of being a regulation. The licensing authority wanted it as a regulation. I am not the licensing authority. We are not the licensing authority. You know, if you want to table the whole thing, that's fine. I'm done working on it.
Well, I think we need to know, if we're going to be tabling it, I think we need to know what it is we want to go.
Well, I think the animal control officer is going to get together with, with Mark Pacico and find out exactly what's going to be presented, because I spent hours upon hours with your involvement in the beginning.
In the beginning, but I haven't had any...
It hasn't changed that much.
Well, it has changed.
You're crying over there that you weren't involved.
I'm not crying.
You were involved.
I, I think her, moving forward, if she gave us input on what should be in a regulation, meaning like, what consists a violation, like, like you brought up a fence.
That would be wonderful. I'll wait for it.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, because this doesn't, this, you did good work, but this is a procedure. We're looking for regulations, I think.
Because if she goes out and fines somebody for not having a fence, they're going to be like, well, there's no regulation for a fence.
Because this just says, a hearing will take place.
But it doesn't have to say fence. It can just say, control for the animals as determined by the Board of Health at the meeting, and I just, I know what's going to happen, is she's going to try and give somebody a fine, and she's not going to be able to, so I, she needs to know what she's enforcing. But I think you can come up with those regulations for what a kennel needs.
Yeah.
That you're going to want to see.
But right now, put it this way, somebody comes in, and they go, I like a kennel, and they go, all right, here's your application. All right, so just so you know, it's less money, and the town clerk's going to issue the license. Don't break any of the rules. What are the rules? Oh, we haven't made them, we haven't made them up yet.
But no, this is excellent for procedures.
The town clerk will issue a fine if you do. It makes no sense.
But I said, this is excellent for the procedures and the laws behind it, but yeah, I think it needs the, the actual regs that she has to enforce day to day with her enforcement.
You should brainstorm, with your experience, what you see, what a violation would be, and all collectively, we say, yes, fencing, whatever it is. Then you put those into proposed regulations, and then we go through that process of, of the hearings, and going from there.
Okay, is there a motion to table until we get those proposed regulations in the office?
So, Owen?
Can I address the board before you do?
Excuse me?
Can I address the board before you table it, please?
Sure.
So, couple things. This is what you call healthy debate, right? But the problem is, we need something. The clerk has made a priority to make sure that kennels are licensed. I think kennels have been treated haphazardly for many years in this town, and I've been a direct result of it through zoning enforcement to deal with it. We also don't have to be reminded of a tragedy that happened in this town, okay? That I, myself, had to get involved through my office to try to deal with. I shouldn't have to deal with kennels, but I did. So we need to take this, this charge before you, let's not kick the can down the road. Let's deal with it. Let's get special meetings, let's get the workshops, let's get this figured out. Let's get all the people in the room and get this sorted out. Bring it to the taxpayer. I don't blame the taxpayers for not voting on it last time we had a red. Let's get our act together. Let's get it done. Tom, you worked a lot on this. We appreciate it. We just need to fine tune it. You need to be involved, police need to be involved, the clerk needs to be involved, we all need to be involved. I'm not going to do what I did on that Maple Road again. It's not going to happen.
Yeah, I agree. If we get the parties all in...
And I, and I'm done working on things that I have no obligation to work on, because I'm such a nice person and want to help out. Those days are gone. But I agree. If we want to table this, we'll table this until the regulations come in from Animal Control and Town Clerk.
If you want to table it, do you want to just put it on for our next meeting, so we have a date certain here, instead of tabling it until we, you know what I mean? It's up to you.
It should be tabled to our next meeting.
Oh, just to the next meeting? Okay, I didn't want to make it, tell whenever she did the regs, and then it could be three months from now. I want to make sure we keep this moving down.
Well, then, it doesn't go on the town order.
That's why I want, I want to make it happen at the next meeting, not at some point in the future.
It needs to go on the town order for this year.
When's the date for that? Do we know?
Probably the end of May, beginning of June.
Okay, so the next meeting will be okay?
There's plenty of time.
Okay.
I'm sure the animal control officer can get together with the police department and town clerk to get this done, so...
Yeah, in the beginning, you have to start working on the regulations, pop, like we have for everything else, the lease law and everything else.
I agree with you.
You shall not, you shall, whatever it is, any owner of a property shall, things that spell it out, and then we have to look at it and say, does this make sense? Is it, you know, is it going to work?
I agree with you that most of this is procedural.
Yeah, and you did reach out.
And it's excellent.
It outlines the procedure, but then in the end, we don't have something to, it's not a real regulation.
You're right, absolutely.
But no, this is excellent. This is very well written.
So is there a motion to table? So moved, until our next meeting.
I second that.
The motion's made by Mr. Bernato to table item number 3A, the, to act on the proposed kennel regulations, seconded by Mrs. Katavia. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Mr. Bernato?
Aye.
Mr. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pires, also an aye. Tabled to our next meeting, whenever that may be. Next item is, we're pushing 45 minutes. 3B, rabies clinic. I believe the rabies clinic has been scheduled. I know the date, but I don't know the time. On May 21st, which is a Saturday, I don't know what the prices are this year either, if they've gone up.
I can give you that information.
You have information?
Dr. Bruzy approved the May, Saturday, May 21st date, 3:00 to 4:00 PM. It's $20 cash for each rabies vaccination, and the town clerk will be there to license Town of Dyton dogs. Previously, we've had people from other towns to come in, and they can come in and get the rabies vaccinations, but he can't license other towns' dogs, so we have sent that off to Dr. Bruzy to proof the notification, and then it will be going out to the town clerk for...
So that, again, that's Monday, May 21st, 3:00 to 4:00 PM.
Saturday, Saturday.
Saturday. Saturday, May 21st, 3:00 to 4:00 PM, $20 cash, correct?
Correct. At the transfer station.
You can also, it's at the transfer station...
Oh, I apologize, sorry. Animal shelter.
835 Tremont? Is that it?
821.
What is it?
821.
821 Tremont. Now, is he accepting checks and cash for the licensing, or we don't know?
Licensing is just check.
Okay, licensing will be just check. Moving on to 3C. Review Discussing Act, schedule public hearing for our proposed septic regulations, and I think I'll take D with it. Review Discussing Act, schedule public hearing for our proposed body out regulations. Probably should be soon, and does anyone feel it should be an off night, or get it, get it done within a regular meeting night? Get it, get it done within a regular meeting night.
You can do it before the meeting. So you open up the hearing first. The way it works is you open up the hearing and then anyone, you know, you, you discuss it. Or you read it out and then you ask the, the audience if they have any comments.
So what time are you thinking?
You could do it at six and then right after the meeting, close that meeting, close the public hearing, open up a new mea, meeting. Open up a regular Board of Health meeting.
That's fine with me.
Do you wanna do them both at the same meeting?
I agree.
Public hearing at six, then open a regular meeting.
For the, for the septic regulations, anything with septic and water, sewer and water, you have to post it in the paper. Two consecutive weeks, I can give you the language on that.
Yes, please.
That has to be done.
And it's two separate postings?
Two, yeah. I'll give you the language on that.
Like a week apart, so, yeah.
But the, the regular one should be, should be posted too, it's recommended.
Right, but it doesn't.
So if you wanna put it in the paper, you can put it at the same time.
But it doesn't need to be twice, just once for the body out?
Yeah, but the, but the sep, the way the regs read on the water and the sewer has to be. But if you're gonna put it in the paper, just put both. They're already paying. You don't have to put the whole thing, you just say that, um, and we could talk about it.
Yeah, the full regs will be available at.
The full regs are, the proposed regs are available, uh, whatever it is.
At our office on the website, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you can forward me the language?
Yeah.
I don't think we have time for that, uh, on our March meeting. You?
No, I don't think so. What do you do for April?
So, I apologize, I missed the last couple of meetings. So the septic regs, we had discussed that we needed to bring in installers and engineers.
Yeah, we scheduled for April, I think.
Yes, we're still doing that?
Yeah, we have to, yeah.
Okay, so April for that?
We're talking about the kennels at the next meeting too.
That's March.
Yeah.
It's March.
We're talking April for septic, so, yeah.
Right, that's, I, I agree you should put it off, you're not gonna get it all done in one night.
Well, hopefully we'll get the regulations in a week or so and we can put that on our March meeting.
When you schedule. Right, right.
But weren't we gonna have the engineers and the installers at the workshop to draft the regs or just to the hearing itself?
Well, we did the works.
We were gonna invite them to the hearing, they can, we can still change the regs at the, the meeting.
So once you have the date of the hearing and it's posted, and you can do a blast email to these, cause you have all these people that are licensed with you for the Title V and a lot of these engineers that work with you. You can just say, hey, just FYI, this, unless you wanna send a letter to everyone, you say, there is a public meeting on the new, uh, that in proposed regulations.
Okay.
Same thing with body out, we have the one establishment, but post it and.
And give them obviously the regs and let them know the date, so, yeah.
The proposed regs again, yep.
Okay.
So if that happened in April, when would they be implemented? What's the process?
That's when we could find out, we could say, we leave that last sentence blank and say, to the effect of July first, whatever it is.
It'd be a couple of months of, like, here and then it would, yeah, go to the Attorney General or whatever, I'm assuming, for them to approve it or is it?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point because we have, what happens is, once it's approved, then we have the, uh, town clerk attest it, send it off to the state, that's it.
I think D E P has approval.
D E P, D E P, yeah.
D E P has approval.
From my understanding.
So you're probably looking about July, or something, when they would go with that.
They put it in the file, it's approved.
Probably be May, before it's finalized though, June.
Be good to get it to them before town readings in case anything goes to them from town readings in June.
Hopefully. Roz, you all set?
Yep, thank you.
Timeline and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions, Barbara?
When would our meeting be in April? Cause this way we, we get the thing planned out, we're not rushing. And we have, we have the public hearing. We could probably do the public, the other public hearing first, we could do the March one if we wanted to, body out one. Do one in March, do one in April.
So it's March tenth and then April fourteenth.
Wanna do it that way?
We're gonna do the body out March.
Do what?
Public hearing in March and, uh, the, the April one.
Say body out, I don't think we're gonna have a ton of public input, we're just gonna probably have the one establishment come in, I would think, but. I'm, it's up to you guys.
You can go have the language by Monday, alright?
Okay.
So is that a motion, did we have, have a motion or does it matter?
No, not yet.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, so I think as long as we have the kennel regulations in order and pretty much ready for presentation, I think we should be good with the bylaw for town meeting just in case it doesn't happen by then. You know, I, I think, well, the regulations don't get presented at town meeting anyway, but I, I will read them and I will read them at the public hearing. But, uh, I suppose there'll be a lot of opposition, but what's new? You know, so. Alright, review, discuss, and act, retract annual report. That's your, are you, that's yours, huh?
Yep. So this is our annual, uh, reporting to D E P for solid waste, for our recycling, um, that kinda stuff. It's due by February fifteenth every year, so all year long we track the tonnages of trash, recycling, et cetera. Um, I've completed the report, I just needed a buy recycled statement by the town or whatever. Once I file this, then I get to file how much we've been spending out of our grant money. We've received a total of like fifteen grand total from them, we just got a check, what, this week for forty-eight hundred dollars? So, but out of the eleven or ten grand that we've got, we've spent almost all of it, so we're doing well with spending the money we get. Once I file this, then I can apply for grant money for this year, so, um, it's, as I say, I was waiting for one, one more thing that I need from the town administrator, which I'll have by Monday and we'll be good to go.
Good, thanks for staying on top of that.
Well, it's, it's nice having a calendar, you can put it in like a month in advance that it's due, so. But yes, tracking it every month made it a lot easier. When I first got here, I was going through all the slips and adding them all up, so it's just easier.
That's it?
That's it.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, moving on to three G. Review, discuss, and act, propane tank reclamation acceptance.
Nope, you skipped one.
Couple of months back, we talked about propane tank acceptance. And I, and I guess it's difficult for, or has been difficult. Our acceptance of these things because, number one, we need to empty them and number two, we need to take the, uh, thingy off the top, whatever you call that.
Valve.
The valve, yes, and, uh, then the hole has to be drilled in it so it can't be refilled. So Tom Varriett asked, oh, a couple of months back about, uh, ceasing the acceptance of these. I did some research and there's not a whole lot of places that, uh, you can get rid of these things, but I did find one that, uh, Blue Rhino, all their locations within, uh, any, any surrounding city, if you just leave the tank off, you don't even have to buy a new one. You can just leave the tank off. That includes the little one pounders, twenty pounders, which is the norm out there, I think, so. Uh, he did say we could accept them at hazardous waste day. Now, we charge ten dollars apiece for propane tank. And that's about the average going price from one of our household hazardous waste people. So, do we wanna not accept them at all? Or collect ten dollars at the household hazardous waste day for propane tanks? Jim?
So I'm not questioning Tom because he's an extremely competent individual. We can't accept him now, he's asking us to cease, but we can accept him on hazardous waste day. What are we doing on that day with them differently than we would any other day? Is there a place that you bring them that will take them?
We store them.
We store them?
Yep.
And then what do we do with them?
We have, someone used to take the metal. I'm not quite sure what's going on now.
But the problem is, we're not sure if there's propane in them.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
And that's why storing them is a problem.
So that's an issue.
Uh, you need to reclaim the, the propane.
I say, send them to Blue Rhino and cease taking them in.
Even on.
That's my op.
Even on household hazardous waste day?
Absolutely, what do we do with them?
They take them with them.
They take them with them.
Who does?
The people, the company that does the household.
But I just asked.
Yeah, but at the transfer station, we store them for the whole year.
No, no, that's what he asked.
That's what I asked.
On hazardous waste day, they take them away that day?
Yep.
So we're, and, and that day, everything else is free, they're gonna drop it off, but we're gonna collect ten dollars from propane tank.
Probably that. Okay, well, that's simple. If they, if we collect the money and we take them, we don't have to store them and they take them, then yeah, let's, let's give that service to the townspeople and collect the revenue.
It's an open brand.
But if they have to sit there for a whole year, we shouldn't be sitting on them.
No.
Yeah, that's a, if they're willing to do that.
I was gonna go ask Lynn's Propane if they reclaim the gas and if they would be interested, which I didn't get there.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I, I think our best bet at this point, in my opinion, bring your stuff to Blue Rhino and we won't be accepting, I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, if they took it at the hazardous waste day, we can't even get a vendor to come in to us. So really.
Well, I mean, we're giving them an alternative, what to do with them by saying Blue Rhino, so it's not like we're saying we don't want them, we don't care what we do with them. And I think that's the best option, just give them the alternative and then hazardous day, fine, whatever, we eventually have it.
If you have a vendor that is, is committed to taking them off of our hands and we don't have to store them, then yeah, of course you ought to offer that service to the townspeople, but you don't even have a vendor right now, right?
Yeah, and so we could say, yeah, we could say, hey, here's another place you can go. And then when we finally have hazardous waste day and the vendor says, yeah, I'll, I'll do this part of it, then we can include that as part of the flyer and say, in addition, if you have propane tanks, ten bucks.
Only that day.
Only that day. Cause we don't have anybody, so we can't even offer it. We don't even know if the person would do it. Hazardous waste, turn hazardous.
Right, two of them have gotten back to me and said they're not taking any, um, or bidding any jobs for this year, not even bidding.
So we might not even have one.
Right.
So who's gonna collect the money at household hazardous waste day or are we doing it for free?
No. Well, I would say, right now we just tell them, folks, we're not taking it. Go to, go to Blue Rhino, there's an option.
Yeah.
And then when we finally nail down hazardous waste day, if a vendor says, I'll do this service for you and we figure out the price, we'll just say to the residents at that time, it's gonna be this, if you wanna get rid of it, that day. But right now we can't offer that, we don't even have a vendor, so I wouldn't take anything, it's a hazard.
And I think maybe there should be a, a sign at the transfer station saying that, so when people do go in, they know ahead of time that they don't have to ask a person that's there and put them in a precarious position of explaining it.
That's a great suggestion. Great suggestion.
Um, so when the board voted a few months ago to not take propane tanks anymore, we put signage up there and we changed it on the website for the, uh, what's acceptable at the transfer station.
Yeah, we also have a flyer that we could hand out as people come in, so.
And suggest, because then what are they gonna be doing with them? Throwing them off the side of the road? So.
That's what, that's what happens.
This is what I mean, if we do say, there's an option, Blue Rhino, that they can drop them off at no charge.
Yeah, and I think.
I'm gonna get that word out to the folks at the transfer station?
Mm-hmm.
I think at this point, most people have changed their tanks over to the appropriate tanks with the correct valve on it. So. Okay, so would you wanna make a motion to not accept propane tanks except for hazardous waste day?
It's unmoved.
I second that one.
Okay, motion's made, seconded to prohibit the acceptance of propane tanks other than hazardous waste day. Uh, any further discussion? From anyone? Seeing none, all in favor? Mr. Bernardo, is it aye? Mr. Katavia?
Aye.
Has an aye, Tom Pires has an aye. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you skipped over three F.
Excuse me?
You skipped over three F.
Schedule bulky item pickup week, okay.
Alright, so.
We got a plan on that?
We do, so we looked at our schedule, so bulky item pickup week is the one week a year that we collect bulky items curbside. So people, instead of having to bring them to the transfer station, you call our office and buy a sticker. Um, it looks like a bumper sticker, that you put on whatever item it is. Uh, so it's, a lot of phone calls the week before and the week of, so we looked at our schedules for vacations and meetings and everything else to know when we'd be around. And then we talked to the Highway Department for what week would work for them. And it appears the week of June sixth to the tenth would work for all parties involved, that is the week after Memorial Day. We do have a Board of Health meeting that Thursday night, but usually by Thursday night, the, the calls have kinda wrapped up, cause that's the end of it. Like I say, it's the week before that's very busy, so.
And the, excuse me, the D P W is on board with that?
Yes.
Uh, what's the date again, second?
Monday, June sixth through Friday, June tenth.
Okay. This mirrors your, uh, waste collection day. In other words, if you have, you have a bulky item, uh, call our office for a sticker, we'll get it ready for you. And the process will be Monday through Friday coinciding with your hazardous waste, I mean, your, your bulky item day. We've had these years pass, so it's same procedure. Any questions, please call our office. Lot of letters here, Roz. Three H, capital outlay request. As you recall, at one of our previous meetings, we had three recommendations to the Capital Outlay Committee. Uh, one was for two new roll-off containers uh, for a total of twelve thousand dollars. And twenty thousand dollars for an attendant building and swap shed. And then the last one was eleven thousand dollars for a point of service system at the transfer station. I did meet with the Capital Outlay Committee to discuss the three items. Uh, they wanted to prioritize it, which we did, and I'll explain how that went. The building and swap shed uh, after discussion is, is going to be hopefully introduced and uh, built in coordination with the, or in conjunction with the Highway Department's move to the, to the transfer station. The point of service system that we were looking for would certainly save some time in accounting and so forth. But the town is not ready for this yet until town hall itself moves into the system, which they haven't got yet. So the first year's priority is gonna be the two roll-off containers for twelve thousand dollars. Ours are in need of repair and I think it's time we started looking at new ones. We could use those old ones for storage of tires. That was recommended, I think, by the U or Matt Tanis at the time. But to be spending twenty-five hundred dollars to repair a roll-off, doesn't make any sense when you can buy one for five or six thousand dollars, so. They're quite old and they get used quite a bit, so that's what happened with that. Okay, three I, review, discuss, and act, M I H A, Title V seminar. Um, Matt, that is the Mass Environmental Health Association. Uh, you wanna speak to that, Todd?
Yeah, there's a, uh, seminar coming up on Wednesday, March ninth in the Hotel in Mansfield. And it's, I think they just came out today with what is on it, but it's about Title V and septic inspections and it's worth, I think it's like seven credit hours or something like that. Um, we need ten hours every two years in order to maintain our soil evaluator and system inspector license, so it's a good way to get a lot of them. Uh, for M I H A members, it's only ninety-five dollars to attend, so. Uh, for MEHA members, it's only ninety-five dollars to attend, so, um, it's great, um, it's a real good way to get a lot of credits, so I'd like to go to it, so.
Is that something either of you would be?
I'd love to, yes.
Okay. You?
I might go, I might go personally on my own. Yeah.
Yeah, is that the normal, uh, that's not the normal one they have?
That's usually at the holiday.
I need five hours, so. Five, I, I have five.
He needs some hours for that?
Yeah, but I'm gonna go personally on my own.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's two members, uh, actually one member and, uh, a health agent. So what are we talking, ninety-five dollars each? Is that what you said?
Ninety-five for members, yeah, non-members is one fifteen.
Okay. We got that in our budget, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So is there a motion to approve two members?
Yeah, mainly because the Falmouth one, that's the three days back in, that we didn't, that we didn't have it, so that kinda frees it up.
What date is that, again?
It's five hours is what you're gonna get for S E F I, S I, just so you know, Kevin. They're talking about nitrogen loading, Title V inspections and failure factors, septic sand, drip irrigation, IA systems.
I'm still debating this one, but, uh.
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday?
You're gonna, you're gonna be able to go?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to send two, uh, members of the Board of Health to the MEHA Title V Seminar?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, motion is made by Mr. Bernato, is there a second?
I will second it.
Mrs. Katavia seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, Mr. Bernato?
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
And Tom Pires also an aye. Next, excuse me, next item is three J, Review Discussing Act, Mass Health Officer Association Membership Renewal. This is something we do every year, correct?
It is, uh, it runs out the end of each year, but I don't know why we didn't get a, a renewal, or if they just gave an extension, but membership sixty dollars a year. So, um, yeah, we need to renew it, so.
Yeah, cheap enough, it's, I don't think we need a motion for that.
It also gets us into N A C C H O.
Yeah, and then you get the discount.
Most American, something.
You can get the discount for, um, November.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's good to. Um, do we need to make a motion?
It might as well.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, uh, pay the renewal for the, uh, MHOA membership.
And I second it.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Bernato to, uh.
Membership renewal?
Yes. To pay the fee for the Mass, MHOA, Mass Health Office Association, seconded by Mrs. Katavia. All in favor? Mr. Bernato?
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
And Tom Pires, aye. Thank you. Next item is three K, Update Recommendations of the Board of Selectmen to Form a Solid Waste Committee. I know we sent a letter in about three or four weeks ago recommending that, and they put us on the agenda, and that was the week I had a death in the family. Then we moved to the next week, and I was sick that week. So I would like to prepare somewhat for this, so this has been moved to their February twenty-third or twenty-fourth meeting, which would be a Wednesday. Um, we still ma- interested in being a member of the Solid Waste Committee.
He's looking at you, kid.
Until June, I'll do it until June, yeah.
Would you like to help me make a presentation?
Uh, we could talk about, yeah.
Okay, I'll be in touch, but I'm gonna be there anyway.
No, but I, I'll go and talk, no, yeah, alright.
We're at six fifteen. I have an appointment, so we don't have to sit there all night. I had asked for an appointment, so, um. And Barbara, you're, you're welcome to come sit there, and which I think would be a good idea for you to listen to it also.
You just gotta, I think, do you have to post us, cause we're both gonna be there?
I would think if you're all going out.
That's what I'm saying, just post us as a meeting.
Okay.
That was the only reason I said that.
Yeah, I, I know one member of the Board of Selectmen's on board with this, at least. I'm not sure about the other two. Um, but I'd like to be able to make a decent presentation. Because I think it's important, a lot of communities now have solid waste committees in the city daily, so, well, thank you, we'll, we'll talk.
What date is that, Tom, again?
Uh, it's on a Wednesday, is it the twenty-third or twenty-fourth?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, yeah, that'll be six fifteen on the twenty-third. Moving on to item three J. Now again, um, Kevin has seen this, and I, and I think uh, we've gone through it quite a bit, but Barbara has not seen this until this evening.
Which one?
Uh, Resident Hamburg, what to expect when installing, repairing, or upgrading a septic system.
I, I looked through the one last week that we got.
Did you go through it?
Did Roz hit it up?
No. You haven't seen that yet, right?
No, I just got that one tonight.
Okay.
I got the other one.
And we can table that also, I think. This is something we can act on next week.
Okay.
If you don't, I think it should take a minute to look at it.
Make some notes on it, if you want. Bob, I'm saying, Barbara, if you wanna make some notes on it?
Mm-hmm.
Add some, if you wanna add comments.
Bye.
And this is just an educational document, so we can change it whenever.
Yeah, we can add to it.
Yep, it's not a regulation that we have to post or anything, this is just educational.
No hurry on this one. So is there a motion to table item three J?
Three.
L.
Three L.
Is that an I?
An L.
That's an L.
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 Alphabetically.
I'll make that motion.
Did you make the motion?
I did.
Oh, sorry, I'm gonna turn my ear and aid.
That's alright.
And I will.
I gotta speak up too.
Barbara, you haven't made a motion yet.
I'm starting, I'm, I'm starting to mumble.
Good, and I second it.
Okay. Uh, motion's made and seconded to table item three L. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, Mr. Bernato?
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pires is also an aye. Just for anybody watching tonight, um, we do take our job seriously. I, I know that it may not look like it sometimes, but, uh, we.
I think we all work well together.
We do take our job very seriously.
Yes.
And we have disagreements, but in the end, I, I think it works out best for everyone, so, um.
And I wanna thank you, Tom, cause you actually put a lot of work into this, so.
Yes.
Oh, well.
And it shows.
Yeah, it does, so you take the, uh, everybody see the effort, so, thank you.
Okay, moving on to, well, thank you both, and moving on to inspectors' reports, the health agent.
Uh, yeah, just a couple things, uh, number one is, we, uh, way back when COVID started, we created, uh, the Emergency Preparedness Committee created an endemic task force reopening committee that was charged with how to reopen town hall safely, back in the day when you could only have twenty-five percent occupancies, fifty percent occupancies, we needed to put up Plexiglas and hand sanitizer stations and such. But the, um, the use for that committee, now that everything's reopened, uh, basically, there wasn't need anymore, so the Emergency Preparedness Committee voted to disband the task force, but since the emergency prep is a subcommittee of the Board of Health, um, we're advising the Board of Health what they did. That's all, it's just an FYI.
I don't think we need to take this other than a informational document, uh, I don't think we need to vote.
No, no, it's just letting you know, that's all. Um, so, and if there's anything else that comes up, such as if we wanna impose a mask mandate or whatever in town, it's gonna come from the Board of Health, because the pandemic task force isn't ready anymore, so, if we decide if anybody wants to do anything relative to the pandemic. But we have a nurse that obviously can weigh in on any of that if we choose to go any of those routes, so.
Does our town nurse have any?
Wait, wait, I got one more thing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Um, so we had a, uh, eh, we've had a couple issues of late, one most recently, where we've had animals leaving their property and going onto other people's property and doing damage, et cetera. The one most recently was, uh, geese that were defecating in driveway and in the lawn, and it was getting very slippery for one of the neighbors. Um, and so I guess at this point, I'm looking for the, obviously, we need, I'm being very careful here, but it's not about regulations or whatever, but I, I think some of it has to come from recommendations from the Agricultural Commission or Animal Control, and maybe the Board of Health has to implement regs on keeping your animals on your own property. Um, or, you know, because you're becoming a, a health problem at this point, the one today, there was actually a rat also, so obviously, we're, we're escalating into a different category here, so. Um, or the number of animals on a property too, because that sometimes causes some of the problems. We've been to a couple sites where there's been too many and too small of a space, and I think there needs to be some kind of regulations, but I don't think the Board of Health should act in a vacuum, I think it should be coming from the Agricultural Commission as a recommendation before this board does anything, so. But it's becoming more and more prevalent in our daily day jobs, so I think something needs to be done soon from these.
Does the, uh, Agricultural Commission have regulations?
We are work, we are starting to work on them on Tuesday.
Okay.
Because this has become a problem, they know it's a problem. And so, we, last meeting, Tuesday, is that, we're coming with all our, our own recommendations, and we're gonna put them all together and.
Okay.
And then they see them, then you'll see them, because they have to go through the Board of Health.
Okay.
So when they make a, are they making a recommendation or are they making a regulation?
I'm not sure what our board can do, I know they have to go through the Board of Health, so I don't know if you have to make the, vote on the regulation?
They make like an outline?
Right, I'm not sure.
Okay, just wanna know how that works.
Yeah, my guess, it would have to come to us.
Well, I know it has to come through you, right.
So. Okay. Barbara, you wanna comment on that, since you're on the AI Commission?
Yeah, um, there are a lot of issues, it's not just geese, uh, there are horses, cows, sheep, alpaca, a lot of things, and simply because they have a right to farm does not mean you can encroach on your neighbors, does not mean you can have forty little goats in one little area. So we've gotta find, we've gotta find a way to enforce this and be fair to everyone, and especially the animals.
What is tough is the state does not have any statutes that say you need to have an acre for a dairy cow, or you need to have an acre, uh, you know, three quarters of an acre for five goats. It's just recommendations, they have no statute, so it's really tough to be able to find a place to enforce before, I mean, once we make regulations, that's something different, but before that, it's really tough. Because I have somebody in town that has five acres and he has fif- sixty cows on that, way too many cows for five acres. He thinks it's okay. You know, so these are things that we need to put into writing, that this is what you need, so.
So in the, in the absence of those regulations, it means more inspections by animal inspector, and, you know, more complaints, possibly the health of the animals being suffered, and then you gotta bring in MSPCA or something, it, it makes for a lot of work, so having regulations upfront would make lives easier for all.
Definitely, definitely.
And we just, we just seized, we just seized eighty goats off of somebody's property, a horse and a emu.
And you know, not only saying they have ten acres, they have to have ten usable acres for these animals.
Little briars and stuff.
Right.
Exactly, well, goats love those little briars and stuff.
And, and you have to do it for each, because each animal's different.
Exactly, exactly.
When you guys meet again?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday coming?
Yep, Tuesday.
Next week?
Yes, yeah, Tuesday.
I'm wondering if we can get a veterinarian's input also, large animal veterinarian?
Do you, do you know large animal veterinarian?
I know a few.
Well, I know one, but she's not, she's not a. Um, we can, but as I said, it's, it's very hard to enforce until we make regulations, cause there's no statute that the, that the state puts out, it's all recommendations. We recommend.
And it's tough now to, to enforce, because some of these places have had animals for quite a while.
Mm-huh.
And all of a sudden, you're going to say, hey, wait a minute, can't do this, are we grandfathered in? No, I wouldn't think so. Not when it comes to the, uh, welfare of the animal. Or the neighbors. Like I said, um, right to farm does not mean you can do anything anytime, it doesn't, you still have neighbors.
Yeah, you can't create a nuisance, that's why we got the Board of Health.
Yes, Miss Ag, yeah.
That's definitely.
But aren't we talking about situations that potentially could be, um, a detriment to the animals because of the.
This is what we're saying, yeah.
Why do we need a regulation to deal with that? If the animals.
Someone has to, someone has to determine if that is detrimental to the animal, that's why I was talking about veterinarians.
It's, it's difficult.
Go back to the kennel law again.
Well, no, it, it's, it's different, it's difficult because every animal is different, and like those, those fifty cows or sixty cows on those five acres. It's, are they unhealthy animals? No. Do they need more space? Definitely.
So how is the regulation gonna do that? You gonna limit the amount of space?
We're gonna have, in other words, if you, you move into town and you wanna put a farm on, I don't know, your property and you've got less than an acre. We have regulations that say you can't do that, because you need this for this animal, or you can have this kind of animal on that property. That's different than, you know, they call me and I say, well, no, I don't think you can do that, and they go, well, I looked up the statues and no, and, and your bylaws, and nowhere does it say that I can't do that.
Okay, like Ladyville has, uh, uh, regulations on horses. If you have one, it's on a certain amount of space, two, and then it goes up to four the map, probably, but it goes by the space. Then it starts, starts talking about paddock away from a, so it talks about paddock, then it starts talking about, um, we move away from wells, it, it spells it out really good. And you can't get a permit unless you, um, notify the abbotists, your abbotists, to give a certain amount of feed, whatever it is, and, uh, everyone has that right for that hearing.
So is this the type of regulation we're talking about?
It could be, I'm, I mean, I am a member, but I'm a non-voting member of the AI Commission, I'm just there to.
And what do you do with fowl?
Fowl?
Fowl, fa- fowl.
Oh, fowl, I thought you said fowl.
What do you do with fowl?
Fowl is tough, I mean, cause they don't require, I think, mass now, it's what, they just.
It's just increased.
It's just increased.
But that's for caged birds.
Right.
So what do you do with fowl that's not caged?
I would like to see all fowl caged, to tell you the truth.
You can't do that.
But I can't do that, so this is where we're gonna have to get into how we're gonna handle that, because, I mean, we've had, we've had a, it go against the town when we've tried to do that. So, but that's all stuff we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to flush out, but I would love to see all fowl caged.
Well, maybe not caged, but at least enclosed in their own area.
Yes, and we tried to do that.
Don't stray, like you don't want the dogs straying, or horses straying, or cows straying.
But for some reasons.
They fly.
But, yeah, but for some reason.
My chickens, I have my chickens and they have netting over the.
Yeah, but I can't do that.
I'm not being sarcastic.
No.
There are ways to do that.
There are ways to do it, but the town asked one person in town to do that, and we got the judgment against us. So.
Do you need to be careful?
We need to be careful.
Will that regulation?
I can't remember, I'm not, I'm not there anymore, but if I send you just that online, I send it to you, you just go look, maybe in your meetings,
Yep.
that conversation comes up.
Yep.
Just an idea, you can see the size that they have, and that, cause it worked really good. You know, sometimes the neighbor would say, I, I really don't want that, and in the end, they were like, I have a problem with it.
Right.
I love these horses.
Right.
Because they were, it was maintained properly. They didn't just, they didn't just throw it against the wall, see if it's stuff, yeah?
Well, I'm very much looking forward to seeing what the Agricultural Commission recommends to the Board of Health.
And regulations don't work if you're a boss then?
Yes.
I don't, I don't see why we, the state recommends and they don't have any guidelines. I don't see why we... The state recommends, and they don't have any guidelines, just the recommendations. Most things with the state, you can't be more restrictive. I mean, less restrictive, but you can be more restrictive. So why can't we create regulations that govern all these animals from the recommendations of the state?
If there's none, you can't. Put it this way. My understanding, when you make a regulation, it has to be reasonable, and then it has to be enforceable. You can't just make it in some ways. That's not even possible. And then you have to be able to enforce it.
And then you have to send a verification, make sure it doesn't conflict with your right to farm and national law allowances under 48.
Well, I think the right to farm statute was created for real farmers, not backyard...
Commercial farmers. Oh, yes. That's exactly what the right to farm is for.
People just took it and ran with it and said, I have a right to do this, and I have a right to do that. And it was basically for commercial farmers.
I mean, I have a place in town. I know there's over 300 birds on acre, maybe an acre of land if that. And we've yet to figure out a way to control it or regulate it, so... Hopefully, that'll happen soon. So we'll see. Okay.
That's the other thing. Are these birds vaccinated? I believe it's a state law. Is it in there?
Not chickens. They'll come out, and they'll test chickens, but they won't come out and test geese or anything like that.
Okay. That's what I mean.
Yeah. Just chickens and...
So if you have bird trace vaccinated?
They're not...
Is that trace?
There are vaccinations, but they come out and test to make sure that they're healthy and that kind of stuff, and they do it for free. Matter of fact, anytime I went to a barn that... or a place except for Barbara's, because I know hers are healthy, but I did let them know. Well, I did let them know, and you know there's testing out there, but I did let them know that the state will test for them and will come out and do that. It was one of the things they asked us to do this year, so...
Town nurse report, please.
Okay, I'll start with COVID. From January 31st to February 2nd, we had 20 cases, which is substantially lower than about five weeks ago when we were at 145. So, I mean, we're going down. Each week it's going down. I think it was at 145, 92, 77, 31, and we're at 20. So hopefully, we keep on that trajectory. We have some changes in the schools this week, and we didn't get to hear a whole update on it because we had our meeting canceled. But they started the students doing the at-home testing. You could opt in. They got tests. They could test themselves at home. They started the previous week with the teachers. I think it was 300 and something students that had opt into it. I don't know how that ended up going because we didn't have our nurses meeting this week. And also, as many know, the commissioner is going to be ending the mask mandate for schools at the end of this month, 2/28. So that will end as well. The contact tracer, she's still doing great. I mean, she's averaging a lot less cases. I would say about five daily. And then we've had a couple days where she didn't have any. So it's definitely going down. I had a Maven webinar last week on tuberculosis, the evaluation of person with Class AB condition. All I can say out of that is I hope that I don't have anyone because it's a lot of work. It's like six months of monitoring someone. So it's... Hopefully, we're not in a place that that's going to happen. I completed and submitted my application for the Massachusetts Association of Public Health Nurse. I'm excited about that. I already have a webinar next week on Lyme disease. So that should be informative. And that's all I have.
Could the contact tracer help you with data input, or is Maven qualified?
No, and that's one of my things also. I am almost up to date with my data input.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
It's... I actually no longer am at my other job on Tuesdays. I've stepped away from there to work on my data input, and then I'm also in school, so...
Yeah, you should be able to keep up with that now, I think.
Yeah, so... And now that the cases are being down, once I get caught up from when we had that huge surge, it won't be a problem.
Yeah, I think... I think sooner or later, probably sooner than later, we're going to not be contact tracing and doing all this data input. What do you think?
Yeah, well, they already announced this week that they're taking COVID off the immediate list in Maven. I think they just don't want to tell us that you... Did you listen to the Maven webinar? So they're taking it out of the immediate workflow. But they're just not coming out and saying, like, you don't have to call anyone. They're just saying, call who you feel like needs to be called. And that it's on the town who they decide needs to be called. So...
Very good.
At some point, we'll have to have a discussion about where we're going to go with that because this is something that's like a forever thing. And how long are we going to continue to call? At some point, it may be more effective to not be calling anyone and let people know that there's certain times, if they want to talk to somebody, that I would be available to speak with them if they have concerns. And then people that actually need outreach could get in touch with me instead of trying to figure out who in the list maybe actually needs anything. We may be reaching out to a bunch of people that don't need anything, and there's this one person that was looking for help. So we'll have to see.
It's never going to go away, but I'm glad to see where we are where we are and moving forward, so... Kind of get used to it after a while, like the flu, you know, yeah.
And that's kind of how it's going to run for the most part is when we get into that season. It will go up, it will go down, and you kind of see, like, down in Florida, they're on a kind of different trajectory than us because they go inside when we're going outside. So in the summer, as we're going outside, they're going back inside because it's too hot, and their numbers might go up a little higher. So we'll see how that is.
You mentioned Lyme disease, so spring's right around the corner.
Mm-hmm.
Probably going to start seeing tick-borne diseases start going up immediately.
Yeah, I just had a Lyme, and I was surprised because...
I know, because it's still snow.
Yeah, but I know that they... I mean, my husband's a hunter, and he's come in from the woods in the winter and had ticks on him.
I don't know how last spring we were, but I'm sure the numbers were...
Oh, Lyme cases?
Were we still doing that?
Laurie was doing it.
Yeah, that's the same. That's the next thing coming around.
That and mosquito illness. I don't know what you guys did last year, but I didn't see a lot of mosquitoes.
No, last year was a good year.
Yeah. It was the year before.
Ticks never go away, though. Those stinkers year-round.
So last year is the first year they decided to spray early in the season instead of waiting until the numbers got so high and then spraying. So they sprayed early, and it made a huge difference.
Who sets that up? Is it the town?
The state.
Oh, the state. Oh, okay.
We just decide to opt in or opt out.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because last year was really... It was nice.
They're still pushing to stop the spraying, so hopefully, you know, I think that would be a big problem with the mosquito population. Okay. Nothing new. Fielding commissioner is next. Animal inspector?
I just have an FYI, sort of. I'll pass these out. We have a kennel that we're dealing with that could become a problem. And when I was talking with this gentleman, he cited this, and I think you need to know that he's... If we deny him, he's going to push back.
This is a commercial kennel.
This is a commercial kennel. And what it states is this little sex judge, superior judge, said that dogs, if they're held on livestock, property, 61A property, are considered livestock. And we can't control them from not having their kennels there because if they're breeding for money to support themselves. I didn't know dogs were considered livestock, but according to a 1993 judgment, they are in breeding, apparently, I guess.
How many dogs?
Well, right now, the kennel, the person has 14. Has 14. He's not planning on breeding, but he will continue to... He will breed if we decide that we don't want to give him a kennel license, and he will cite this. It's just an FYI, so we're all prepared that it could be coming down the road.
What breed does he have, you said?
I didn't say what he had.
Oh, okay. I was missing. I was trying to read and listen and, you know...
No, I didn't say what kind of dogs he had.
Couldn't this be alleviated by what you want to propose by making regulations with the animals and how the property is...
This is a commercial kennel.
Oh, so that wouldn't...
And if he's on property that's under... What is it? 61A, Barbara?
Yes.
61A, that he has the right to breed dogs on that property if he's making, because they're considered livestock, and 61A is farmland.
Oh, we had the thing for residential, right?
Right.
So I guess we just do our own thing with residential, and then you just... Somebody does the homework to see...
Yeah, I just... I... Right. I know he's going to... I know he's going to, right, push back. Every time I talk to him, this is what I get. Well, you know, the super... You know, this... So I just wanted to give you a heads up that this is something that's coming down. Right.
Well, I'm glad the Agricultural Commission's working on this.
Not the dogs.
You can... Can't you ask that question? Maybe there's some expertise there. You will if it becomes livestock.
Well, if it becomes livestock, if he's breeding, I guess we would. But dogs don't usually fall... See, this is what I was confused about.
Case law... Case law was always specific. If case law was going to change legislation, we would have already happened. This was the 9th.
Right, so that... Well, and then again in 21.
So the only way I'm going to take that and make paper worth, if anything more than what it is, is if case law is specific to the situation you're in.
Right, and I understand that. But I'm just... I just wanted people to have the heads up that this is out there because I had never heard of it until they mentioned it, and I looked it up. So I just wanted you guys to have a heads up that this is out there and...
We don't have anything different, all right? We're actually just trying to do residential right now.
We're trying to do residential, but I do believe he's trying to get a residential... Not that... He wants to get a residential permit, which... A kennel license, which is... There's other things that go along with that, that he can't...
If we have residential regulations, that spell a residential, you'd have to do something different, right?
Superior court judge, too.
If he's selling, it should be under commercial.
Right. Right now, he's not selling. What I was told was that he would if that would mean that he could have a kennel license. I'm just putting it out there, that's all.
Well, Rossi, I didn't get a copy of that. Can you please make sure I...
Oh, you can have this copy. I will... I can just print it off my...
Judges have been known to make bad decisions, so...
Oh, do you think so?
Yeah. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Are you public a book?
It's off the internet, so it must be true.
It was W...
Oh, yeah.
W... Channel 5. Channel 5 is where I got it from.
I'll have to research that now. When did you formally become a member?
Pardon?
When did you officially become a member?
At the beginning of the Agricultural Commission.
No, this board.
Like January 19th or something?
January what?
January 19th, maybe?
Yeah.
All right, so you don't need to act on...
Yeah, because we had our meeting on the 13th, but she was appointed on the 19th. So it was probably Thursday, the 20th, when she became an official member.
Okay, there's four minutes, four days of minutes that need approval. Mrs. Katavia was not here for October 25. Oh, she was not a voting member. October 25, December 9, and January 13. So, Ms. Bernardo, would you make a motion to approve the minutes of October 25, December 9, 2021, and January 13, 2022?
So...
I'll step down a second. A motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mr. Pires, aye. Those pass. And we have a... Get a motion to approve the minutes of January 31, 2022, special meeting. I think you were present.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to...
So, yeah, you were...
Wait a minute. Was that the one last Monday that I wasn't at? No, it wasn't.
Yeah, you sure wasn't there.
I wasn't there.
That was the phone call one.
No, you were here. You were on Zoom. I wasn't.
That was the real short one.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll step down a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mr. Pires also an aye. Motion passes. And is there a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second that.
Motion's made by Ms. Bernardo to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Mrs. Katavia. All's in favor? Mr. Bernardo?
Aye.
Mrs. Katavia?
Aye.
Mr. Pires also an aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, Cable. Thank you, everyone, for watching. Have a good weekend. Come...